Amen. Welcome everybody to this meeting and it looks like we have a good representation of the community. Up on this, Diaz if you will, we're missing one. He, Dr. Clifford, as most of you probably know, has resigned his position on the County Commission. He was appointed as a state representative to replace Russ Jennings. And we wish Dr. Clifford well in his new endeavor and he's still, still going to be a vocal input, I think, once in a while to our commission business, so we may hear from him later today. So with that said, we welcome Larry back also, who took a kind of a somersault.
A little soldier.
There we go. Anyway, good to see you up and with us. So with that, I would entertain a motion for our consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, that carries. Now let's approve our regular agendas. Anything we need to add? Nope. A motion please.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve our agenda and a second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. I'm going to call on you in just a little bit. But we have in our audience today some folks that I asked to be here. And Patty, I don't know who all you want to accompany you, but would you please come up to the speaker's platform? And I'd like to introduce to you, if you're not familiar with Patty, our new director of the Senior Center. And I'd like for you to take a few minutes and kind of tell folks about you that if they don't know you. Would you do that please Patty?
Sure. I, my name is Patty Thummel and I have worked at the Senior Center now for almost 15 years. I have been the Meals on Wheels Director and in that time of, since I started. And then in the last couple of years, I've also become the Activity Director, leading the activities at the Senior Center. So now I'm going to be the Director of the Senior Center in Fannie County Transit. I've always worked with seniors. I love working with seniors and I always will. So I think I'm in the place I need to be.
We welcome you to the new job, so look forward to working with you in that capacity.
Thank you.
Is she okay Kathleen?
She did great.
Okay, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'm on the FCCA Committee and...
Come on up to the podium please. That way you're on the camera.
I don't necessarily want to be on the camera. I'm really excited about having Patty come on board as Executive Director. She started on December 1st and we think she'll do a wonderful job. We kind of have mixed feelings. She did such a great job as a Meals on Wheels Director, so we will hate to lose her in that role, but feel confident that she'll be able to find somebody to fill that position.
You didn't have to show her around the building.
We didn't have to too much, no. We're excited to have her.
Both of you, thank you. Okay, we have a gentleman on the front row that asked for a bit of time, so please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Sean Pelham and I would like the Council to consider putting in an ordinance in the county dealing with landlords and tenants. And my concerns for that is, my house for example, I have mold in my house. I have a newborn. I have a six-year-old. There's another house, my in-laws across the street, it's riding to the ground around them. The landlord is doing nothing to fix anything. I tried to get an inspector out there and was told I can't, that's I'm doing a project, it's county.
What is the address that we're talking about?
It's Sunshine Trailer Park.
I'm sorry?
Sunshine Trailer Park, across the street from Hydro, out on Jones Avenue. It was just sold to Mario Reyes and I don't know if he's the owner or an employee of Summit Assets LLC. That's who I make my money orders out to for my rent.
Okay.
But Mario Reyes is the landlord.
I don't want to burden you, but could you kind of put your concerns in writing so that we would have a record to know exactly what it is that you're concerned about and see if we might be able to address it or not?
Yeah, who do I address? Do I just bring it up here and...
The county, we have a county administrator here, Robert Reese, or a county clerk. Or the young lady over here is our county counsel, is Linda Loebmeyer, so our council attorney. So any of the three or all of them.
Yeah, that's what my concerns are. There's no ordinance out there and my hands are tied. I can't just move, you know, with the mold in the house, my newborn, my six-year-old, you know, it's just concerning.
Sometimes our hands are tied, but if you'd put that in writing, so that we would know what we're dealing with, then we can take a look.
Yeah, that won't be a problem. I'll get that to you guys tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
To this building. Did you need a...
I wouldn't say I would give him my information and need to know where to bring that, just gives a call.
Okay, all right, thank you ma'am. I can't say guys, I have an appointment with my newborn at the doctor's, so I appreciate that.
You're excused then if you need to go. Thanks for your participation. Okay, is there anyone else who would have a public comment that might be an item not on our agenda? Hearing none. Business items. We started off with, is Hillary coming or who's representing the board appointment here for the Senior Center? Patty, come back up and do your official business now.
The FCCA Board has nominated Sandra Holly for the Board Chair, or a Board Member.
So to put that in perspective, Robert Sparks resigned from the Board, so this is his uncompleted term. And Sandy happens to be the wife of Neil Holly, for those who know the family, so they've been here a long time. So you're offering her and we need a motion to place her name and nomination?
Mr. Chairman, before we, I'm certainly in favor of this nomination, but just for clarification, the information we had in our package said that we were asked to put her in place for three years. However, I heard you say, "unexpired term" of Robert Sparks. So I'm confused if it's going to be an unexpired term or if it's a full three-year term.
I think both are true. I think that's about how much of his expired term.
Is that right? Okay, so it is a three-year term. So I would then move that we appoint Sandy Holly to the Fannie County Committee on Aging Board for three years.
Okay, is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Would you like to report to Sandy that she is now a Board Member?
We will, thank you.
Thank you. County Administrator or County Counsel, one or the other, okay. Linda, sale of real property.
Correct. As the commission is aware, we advertised for sealed bids with regard to two properties. The first one is 510 Burnside Drive, Lot 22B. We received one bid for that and I'll go ahead and open that for your consideration. The bid for that property is $500.
And do you want to speak?
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. And that's from Javier Vieramonts, Vieramonts Castaneda.
Okay, Board Members, it's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept that bid for $500.
Okay, a motion to accept that bid. And a second, discussion. Those in favor say aye. Aye, that is his property, thanks.
The next bid that was advertised is 3008 West Mary. For that property, we received two bids. The first bid comes from Pite's Material and Handling LLC and the bid amount for that is $8,000. Sorry. This is one of those. I meant to grab one and I did not do that, so that's on me. I got it, thanks. The second bid comes from Bob Rodriguez of Envision Real Estate and he is, his bid is $25,500.
Okay, Board, it's your pleasure. Twenty-five thousand as opposed to 10?
As opposed to eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sell the property to the highest bidder.
Hold on, I, give me just a moment. I misread. Let me back up, I apologize. I misread. Bob put his card in there and his name at the top of the page, so that is not who the buyer is. He is the real estate agent for an individual, so I apologize. And that individual is Alfonso Martinez.
But it's still the same bid?
It's the same bid. I just wanted to make sure that we understood Mr. Rodriguez was not purchasing that, but it was rather...
Larry offers a motion to accept that high bid. Is there...
High bid for 3,008 West Mary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, that carries. Okay, Alicia, come forward.
Good morning. I'm good, how are you? Okay, the first case I have before you is an amendment to the Fannie County zoning regulations. This amendment just mirrors the resolution that was passed in order to increase the Fannie County Board of Zoning Appeals from three to five members. So we've added that language to mirror the same as the Garden City, with the same year for terms, which would be three, two, and one. You can approve the amendment as presented, you can approve it with changes, or you cannot approve the amendment.
We need to kind of do this in steps, so let's start off with this amendment and consider whether we want to approve it or not. So I would entertain a motion.
Is it a resolution?
Yes, Resolution 25, 2021.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I would go ahead and move that we approve Resolution 25, 2021.
Okay, second. Hearing none, I'll second it. Yeah, go ahead. Cheryl, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of that resolution then say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That carries, okay Alicia.
The next case I have before you is a rezone from Ag to Real Residential at Highway 83 and West Five Mile Road. It's 5.7 acres and Mr. Waycamp, the next one will be his plot. He's taking out five acres. His dad lives just south of him, so he'd like to build a house out there. That's why they are...
So rude as to interrupt you and go back to the Board of Zoning. We've now moved to raise that to five and you have two names now, do you not?
I, we only have one still. I can ask you Lynn, but I have not been sent a second one if they have applied.
I don't want to get mired here in a long discussion, but we've had some confusion here in that part of the people are turning in their name to the county because it's a county position and some were told to apply to the city clerk.
If I can go ahead and explain that process, we have of course the interlocal agreement with the city with regard to the Planning Office. So in order to apply for the Board of Zoning Appeals, persons need to present their application to the Planning Office because that's where the Board of Zoning Appeals comes through, is through that office.
But I'm going to state a county commissioner's position. We go to a meeting somewhere and we're trying to solicit folks to a board. If we have, if it's over there Linda, in the city building, we have no idea who's on that list.
Alicia is...
Somehow we need to communicate.
Alicia is extremely good at communicating that to me. And as far as I know and as far as my experience has been, their communication with the county has been very good. I'm just not sure. I think the problem is, is that if we start sending it to different places, that may get lost in the shuffle because it's no one's role over here in this county building to oversee the Board of Zoning Appeals, whereas in the office, at the city office, in the Joint Planning Office, which is a joint office with the county, that is their role to oversee that position. And that's why I think it's just best and good that we're talking about it publicly here so that everyone knows that that is where those applications should be presented.
All right, we've got a fellow that previously served on that that desires to be reappointed and they don't have his name.
Okay, well, he needs to go to the city office and submit his name.
I give up.
I mean, has he done that?
Well, I called.
I've not, I've only received one application for the Board of Zoning Appeals and it's not who we discussed.
Okay, well, we'll put that on the table until another meeting, but I'll get ahold of him and see what... Because I called him and I said, "Okay, send your, send an email or a call or do something. Let the city know you're interested." And he told me he would.
And it's just, just...
I'm saying there's no follow-up.
Right, Dave, just to be really clear, it's not the city, it's the Joint Office for Planning and Zoning. So it is our office in addition to being the city's office. So I know that it's a little confusing because it's in a different building, but it is still part of Fannie County and that's why Alicia comes here, is because that is part of what we oversee or what you oversee as the commission there. And so that is a branch of the commission that's been authorized to take those.
I believe I was instructed to have them apply to the city clerk, is that right?
Correct.
So now the city clerk's not part of that planning office.
Okay, well...
I'm just saying, this needs to be...
Fair enough, fair enough.
Mr. Chairman, since we're on the subject, my question is this. And I hear what you're saying and the applications, to clarify for those watching online and people in the room, the applications need to go to the city clerk.
Correct. It's on our website and they've been advertising, if you, if they follow, you know, Garden City, there's a link that they can apply and it tells, lists all the boards that we take care of and that's how they apply.
Which leads to my question, and this is an issue that I have. But we're not doing that on the county website evidently. These are county appointees.
Correct.
And so we're not doing what we should be doing as a county if it's only being posted on the city's website. And secondly, yes, I look at Facebook. I call myself a Facebook stalker because I don't post, but I read. And there's too many people who I come in contact with that are no longer Facebook people. They're no longer looking at things like that because of all the issues that have been going on, at least for the last couple of years. And so I think we've got to find better and more ways to get the word out. And we've got to be very clear that it's county appointees, but the applications go to the city clerk because it's a joint planning office. And I don't think we're doing that very well.
Okay, we'll take this up another meeting. I apologize for interrupting.
No worries.
Him and his desires for us to consider.
As I mentioned before, Mr. Waycamp is requesting to rezone to Real Residential for 5.7 acres so that he can build a house. You're, you may approve the rezone or you may not approve the rezone. Those would be your alternatives.
We approve the rezone.
Okay, have a motion, second. And a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the rezones say aye. Aye, that carries.
The last case I have before you is the parcel plot for Mr. Waycamp. As I mentioned before, it's on Highway 83 and our Five Mile Road and it is 5.7 acres. He has already rezoned the property as mentioned before. Your alternatives are to approve the plot or to not approve the plot.
Your, here's appreciated board.
I move we approve the plat that we just rezoned.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, that carries, it's very platted, okay, that's it?
That's it, thank you.
Next on the agenda is a discussion about the ARPA project review and program. We've got multiple presenters and I also have a note here from Dr. Clifford that he desires to be read into the record. So with your permission, may I read that and then we'll open this up and...
Little diversion here is that I believe Susan is here to kind of talk a little bit about the contrib, some contributions that were made from her office. Is that correct Susan? I know we didn't get you in on...
Yes, I was just going to do like the...
You're hiding behind the, come up Susan, I didn't see you.
And so I'm sorry, apologize for that, but if we could add her before the ARPA discussion. Would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So I tried to give you guys at least a kind of an update of some of the things that we're contributing to our community through the office. And we contribute to, I did not count them, and I would say there's close to 50 agencies within our county. This year's total of diversion funds and contributions so far is $281,913.83. And I did not get that list for IT, for them to put it up. But some of those agencies would be ABC Pregnancy Center, the Cancer Society, boxing clubs, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boy Scouts, CASA, the AMEA's House, Family Crisis Center, the Humane Society, Senior Center. So it's just anywhere from, I'm going to say $2,000 to $10,000 have gone to those individual agencies, just depending on which agency it is. The reason there's a disparity in those dollar amounts is we do let the diverties choose where they're going to contribute that money. Looking for that spreadsheet here, the one... The actual total for those contributions so far is $84,000.
The actual total for those contributions so far is eighty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents that have gone to those agencies. We have a hundred and five dollars remaining in that fund, which we, um, in conjunction with our law enforcement, support them in some of the endeavors that, or the purchase items that they're not able to obtain through their budgetary process. This year, um, so far, what has gone into that expenditure are two license plate readers that the Garden City Police Department has requested. Um, Guardian Angels safety lights, which each one of our supporting agencies has requested, and these are these little lights that sit on their shoulders that when the, the officer leaves their car, it does like wig-wag lights or a flashlight, and it also shows an infrared beam if they're to be found via drone or plane. Um, and so each one, KBI, Holcombe, Finney County Sheriff, and the Police Department will be benefiting from that. Um, a Graykey license, which is what we use, or law enforcement uses, to break into phones that we don't have codes for. So we have supported, um, in part, that endeavor, um, and some monitors and projectors that will be used for training. So we try to do that every year. We've bought brass collectors and some other things for our law enforcement through that, through that purchase program, so.
And Susan, this requires no board action on our part, it's just a report that, of what you're doing, correct?
Just a report of what we're doing and what's being contributed back to the community and our partner agencies.
Appreciate that, so.
So, and then I did want to introduce, we do have our financial officer, um, Jennifer Zarpati. So she's the one who helps me with the budget and with creating all of these cool spreadsheets, um, for the things that we do. And I did want you guys to see her, and she, um, did come in, so she's right here.
This is Jennifer.
So she's my right hand on the money stuff. Um, if you guys ever have any questions, she would be another person to talk to.
Okay, any, uh, questions or comments from the board?
Now, when you, uh, ask the, the payee, you, do you give them directions of different funds available or where they can contribute to these diversion funds?
We present a list of those diversion, um, opportunities to them for the contributions occasionally. Um, all of the ones that are being contributed to at this time have submitted paperwork showing that they're a five oh one C three charitable organization. So anyone who has not presented that to us has been taken off the list. We do occasionally get someone that submits something new, and we just put them on. There's really no question from our office as to who we accept. If you have that, that capability to be a five oh one C three, we will accept it and then just add you to the list, and it's by pure chance of who, who gets the money, um, or not. But everybody kind of has a different picture for what it looks like on their end. You know, some really like going to Russell Child Development, I know that's been a big one. Girl Scouts has been another real big one. Um, some of them are churches, so it's just various things across town. But it all remains in Finney County.
Any other comments or questions? Susan, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, we ready for ARPA? I'm going to read this rather short, uh, letter from Dr. Bill Clifford to the county commission. I am sorry that I cannot be there with you today, but as a citizen, I wanted to comment on the task before you distribute limited ARPA funds. As you know, the purpose of these funds is to, quote, "support pandemic recovery efforts, replace public sector lost revenue, spur job growth, jumpstart economic growth through household and business stabilization, and address systematic public health and economic challenges," end of quote. At your November twenty-two meeting, during my absence, uh, serving as a state legislature, you were presented with a plan from the County Finance Council and your cons, and our consultant, Mr. Jeff Stevens. The, the plan focused on three principal areas. Sewer districts, county fairgrounds, infrastructure, and the county administrative building, with some discussion of childcare and the Garden City Community College workforce development. However, well-intentioned, this plan puts too much emphasis on county needs and fails to address the immediate needs of our citizens and businesses. All of us, the county included, encounter a workforce shortage which is exas, exasperated, I just can't say that, by the, our local wage pressure and daunting lack of childcare. Rightfully, the city of Garden City stepped up with a commitment of ARPA funds for childcare, and the county should make a similar commitment. You are all aware of the numerous hu, hurdles to developing childcare operation and the time required to meet the myriad state safety and fire regulations. We have a mature local childcare network which is uniquely positioned to move forward once adequately funded, and I encourage you to act without delay to begin the process of solving this immediate community need. That's signed by Bill Clifford, M.D., Fry Eye Associates. So with that said, Mr. County Administrator.
Yes, good morning. Um, what I'm going to present to you today is nothing more than what, that, what I presented, in fact, last meeting, just as a refresher, um, which would allow us to move the conversation forward a little bit more. Um, as we move through the PowerPoint, just real briefly, um, next, next page here, um, give you an idea of what, um, what the various entities within the community had received for ARPA funds. Uh, with the, uh, county receiving approximately seven point one million, the first half was, uh, back in, uh, June of this year. Uh, we'll receive the second half, one year following that, that first, first half. So we're about seven months away from, six or seven months away from receiving that, uh, half. As I discussed last time and presented to you, were, uh, some of the challenges within your sewer districts, uh, that, um, as we were asked by the board was to create a listing of things from within the county to present to you, needs attention. We brought those to the, uh, Jeff Stevens' I Parametrics Group to see what qualified, and then took the top three and brought them to you. Uh, and that's how we re, we got to this point today. Um, as you can see, um, uh, sewer district number one, please. Uh, there's various improvements, uh, needed to that, to the pumps, uh, pump stations. Uh, many of these, uh, things have been left unchecked for numerous years, uh, with, uh, your county staff being called out in the middle of the night to try and keep things running for the various districts. Um, so you'll see that, that, uh, you'll have a pump station, cammering of the lines, cleaning and so forth for really all of the districts. Uh, and if you can keep going for me, please, um, to continue service, um, for these areas and to bring them up to a, uh, standard, uh, as I'll report in my, uh, summary. At the end of the meeting, I'm, um, working with, uh, both, uh, Public Works and G.I.S. Uh, to map the current infrastructure in an effort to per, uh, utilize that information in a, um, a request for proposal, uh, if the board so chooses to move forward to making improvements to your sewer district, um, repairs and improvements. Uh, overall, as you continue through sewer district two, and, and then sewer district three, which, uh, a note on sewer district three is that you do have a, uh, proposed development moving forward just north of sewer district number three that is going to require these improvements anyway, uh, to, uh, for, uh, standardization and reliance, uh, reliability. The first phase will be approximately seventy homes, seventy units there. Uh, overall, we're, we're anticipating a cost to all three of your sewer districts of, uh, somewhere around that three point five million dollars for all three of them, to, uh, make improvements of that. As I presented last meeting, then, on the fairgrounds, um, keep in mind is that this facility is utilized by E-Management for your shelter. Uh, this is to provide improvements so that it can be used, utilized as a year-round shelter, as well as, um, efforts to make improvements, uh, to it in consultation this summer with, uh, CVB on the, um, on that facility. Um, these improvements include, but are not limited to, um, upgrades to electrical services, IT, uh, services, uh, additional storage, HVAC improvements, um, for, by way of example, uh, approximate estimated cost on that is approximately one point five million dollars for those improvements. And then lastly, um, as presented last meeting, were the improvements to, uh, four of the high-traffic, um, county offices within this facility, which include the treasurer's office, clerk's office, appraiser's office, and, uh, register deeds office. Um, many of them is to create separation and, uh, safety for both the, uh, customers that come into the county and, uh, those that are working, uh, for the county. These projects, um, these projects here were estimated somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've been working with the departments to begin the process of identifying specifically what improvements, um, will be needed. Just to reiterate is that, uh, this, this was accomplished and performed as a request by the board to present to you. Um, so that is, that has been accomplished. The board did mention that they would like to set some monies aside for childcare, although have not specifically stated what that dollar amount is. And I think that's today is one of the things that we need to be discussing more specifically. As far as an ask from me on this is that, uh, I would ask a, um, consideration to move forward on the improvements to your sewer district, plural, so that we can get that process going and these improvements and repairs underway. Knowing that there is, um, as you are well aware, a short supply of various materials and qualified contractors for jobs such as this, I think it would be in the county's best interest then to at least move forward on this aspect of the proposed improvements. So that concludes my presentation, subject to your questions.
Four up, and I want to make a comment ahead of that. I asked Robert in a side discussion if we would take a look at not three and a, three million dollars this first, um, check that we got that's in the bank, but rather let's look at the entire seven million. And so seven point one million, let's be more accurate about it, as we try to, to, uh, decide exactly how things need to fit into that to best serve our, our community and our, uh, constituents. That said, um, at some point, and fairly soon on, I think what Robert's asking is, I'm going to reframe your question a little bit, is on the sewer district, we almost need to go to bids in order to know what the cost of that is.
You're, you're correct, and I can sequence the, just the payments of those improvements so that, um, that you'll, you'll have cash available if you so choose for various other initiatives, whether that's childcare's or, or workforce enhancement or whatever the case may be. I can sequence those improvements based upon that.
And then, uh, my personal, kind of an opinion I'm going to throw out is that maybe childcare and some of those needs is a bit more important to the community than putting up, uh, another petition or something here in this building, whatever. Uh, we may come to disagreement over that, but that's kind of my feeling. And then in the area of transparency, I had a call, or I had actually started off with a text message from Faith Heck, the director of the Nazarene Church-run daycare center, with a question about, uh, they had, I think, twenty-nine youngsters, and they had six the day that she contacted me, six, who were home because somebody in the family was, was, uh, quarantined due to COVID. And they were likely to run short on, uh, funding for their staff. And so I gave that to Robert to check, and then I said, I need to recuse myself because in the, in the, in the attempt to be as transparent as possible, I happen to be a member of the Nazarene Church, so I need to step aside. But, but do know that I fo, I sent that, that question up. And so there may be some other daycare centers that are experiencing the same thing as the Naz, the Nazarene folks, and that's because of COVID. They, their kids are, are in quarantine. So there are some things here for us to consider today. Now, I'll conclude and turn, turn to the fellow board members.
Mr. Chairman, uh, several comments and a couple of questions. Uh, one, uh, comment is the sewer districts, uh, do need attention, and especially sewer district three with the additional seventy homes. Uh, and I appreciate the staff responding to our board request to put together some county priorities. I, uh, would ask whether it, whether it be the sewer districts, the fairgrounds, uh, I, you know, I think those are priorities over maybe improvements within this building. But, uh, if we didn't use, uh, or don't use, uh, these ARPA funds for those projects, uh, do we have money in our budget for any of these projects? Or is it going to be future budgets that we're looking at to see whether or not we can do the improvements that we're talking about with regard to facilities?
If you are looking at, uh, budgeted funds to do these projects, no, there is not budgeted funds. It doesn't preclude that we will be searching for other avenues, um, especially once, um, once this latest bill and the, uh, guidelines for this latest bill comes out, there may be opportunities within those to tap into it. Um, on, once again, I, I will express, um, a sense of urgency, if you will, to address your sewer districts. As you, the board of county commissioners, have been well aware, over the years during your budgeting process, the Public Works Department, um, except for one of the districts, really picks up the tab for, for many of the operational and, um, repair needs within two of the other districts, and that would be sewer district two and three.
So I, I also respect what, uh, our former commissioner has said with regard to priorities and childcare, and yes, we have verbally stated that childcare is one thing that we want to work with. I'm looking forward to hearing from others with regard to workforce development and the childcare, uh, issue, uh, before I would make any final decisions. But of the things that have been presented to us, uh, so far, the sewer districts are a high priority in, in, uh, my mind because they do affect housing, uh, and, uh, quality housing and, and so forth, and especially if we're going to connect another seventy, uh, to, uh, one of the sewer districts. So, uh, that's my comments at this moment, Mr. Chairman.
And just as an additional comment, I would add that, that you provide sewer service for over five hundred, five hundred residents and two hundred businesses.
Okay, Robert, we, we're going to have to.
Yep.
Or have folks come back again to the, to the, to the speakers.
Okay.
Thank you for right now.
You bet.
And now.
We'll have Jeff.
I had a, I, I, I had an email from Dr. Ruda, uh, with a concern, and I said, let's have you come to the, to the county commission meeting, and, and so you're part of the agenda. So, Dr. Ryan Ruda, would you come forward? And you had a, had a request for workforce development help, so.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak to what I did send you there on, on the use of the ARPA funds and a request that we have. Garden City Community College. Garden City Community College is, is developing workforce training to address skills gaps and a talent pipeline to develop that aligns workforce industry training and industry demands. College is working currently with regional industry partners and local school districts to develop this workforce training. The particular training that I'm referencing supports economic and workforce development to promote a robust regional economy and workforce, specifically an industrial machine mechanic and a newly formed robotics program. Just to set the stage, nationally, the need for industrial machine mechanics is expected to grow by twenty-three percent between 2021 and 2029. To put that in perspective, this equates to an increase of fifty-six thousand, three hundred job openings each year over the next decade. The median annual wage for industrial machine mechanics is fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty locally. Through the American Rescue Plan, federal funding, there are eligible uses of funds for regional initiatives and partnerships that combine education and on-the-job training programs, as I'm referencing, or for job training to accelerate rehiring and addressing negative impact experienced due to the worker's occupation or level of training. This is noted in the Department of Treasury's final ruling. Workforce development and job training are eligible uses of this allocated funds. To meet the needs of industry in this program that I'm referencing and to be responsive to the training requests, Garden City Community College is requesting two hundred and twenty-five thousand that would be able to be used and allocated through the county ARPA funds that are available through 2024. This funding would allow the college to meet industry demands, hire additional faculty to expand workforce training and train new employees and increase pathways for ongoing training on into the future. We're requesting as a part of this to partner with Fannie County and leverage the funds to expand training and career opportunities. We have already received over six hundred thousand from industry partnerships as well as state, local, and college funds that are being allocated and used towards this. Overall, this level of collaboration and support allows Garden City Community College to be able to meet the industry demand and be much more responsive to community and industry needs as we go forward. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, stand by for some questions.
Question, these are one-time monies.
Correct.
So you figured that in your budget?
We did. This, this allows, currently we have one faculty member. This allows us to bring on a second. And then we have a sustainability plan that we built in there that will allow us incrementally to be able to bring the second faculty member into the general fund over time.
You'd be funded by other corporations that want to contribute to this fund or have wanted to have people trained?
Correct. So we've worked with, we've worked with industry as well as we have several state, state grant, current opportunities that we have in place there that are helping with the funding of not only equipment, but also our faculty at this time.
That's it for now?
For now.
Okay. Ryan, what you're asking the county to consider is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is that correct?
That is correct.
The, the question I have comes from, from some that I meet in the community, and that's simply this, the college receives in ARPA funding a little over four million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
What in the world are you spending it on? Is, out of four million, is there not two hundred and twenty-five thousand is essentially the question?
No, it's, it's a great question. And, and back to, I think, an original slide that Robert had used there as well. So in this, in this recent round of stimulus funding, we received just over four million. What is misunderstood about that is that over fifty percent of our funding that comes has to be allocated directly to students to be as, to be used as grant funding. So it's a little bit of a mis, misperception or misnomer that, yes, we have four million, but over fifty percent of that is allocated directly out to students for cost of attendance.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, and, and Ryan, I, I appreciate and respect the, the fact that you're needing some help with regard to workforce, and workforce is definitely an important piece for us out in this part of the state. But help me understand again, and it's kind of tied to Larry's question, the one-time versus ongoing, and I hear what you're saying about sustainability and so forth, but the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, a piece of that's for a salary, but the rest of it's for, I mean, I'm not asking for line item.
Sure.
But in general, the rest of that would be for what?
Yeah, so what, what this particular request would be, would be for primarily a second faculty position. So seventy-five, what we equated it to is seventy-five thousand a year for the next three years.
Oh, okay.
And then order to be able to move into that sustainability.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Yeah, I, I did understand that. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Wayne, have any questions?
He covered the point I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman, so I appreciate that. Still gathering information.
Still gathering. All right, Ryan, we'll excuse you for a moment, stick around.
All right, thank you.
And economic development, who, who from there needs to come forward?
Chairman, before we start, can you guys be sure to speak into your microphone, please? They're having trouble hearing online. Just Larry?
The green light's on.
I know. Get closer, Larry, get closer.
We do have our PowerPoint available on it. Don't forget if you want it. Okay, thanks.
Larry, she seems to pick on you a lot about that.
I know. We're still educating him. Slow learner. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. And all right, so you, we were in, obviously in the audience when you got the report on childcare at the last meeting, and just wanted to start our presentation this morning just by sharing an overview of the data that was presented to you and an understanding of why that data can't be taken at face value. So we're going to start with, Shannon is going to go through some slides with you, and they, your slides are numbered. It's a tiny little number on the lower right-hand side, so if you get lost, stop him, and he can certainly get you caught up, okay?
You know, when I saw all of these charts, I knew Shannon had been at work.
Well, and he was really proud of himself because he really wasn't, he didn't get too overzealous with his slides, so, yeah.
Shut up, Shannon.
All right. Good morning. I'll even speak into the microphone. I'm Shannon Dick, Director of Analytics, Fannie County Economic Development Corporation. Like Lana said, I'm going to take a little bit of time and talk about the Childcare Aware data, just so we understand what it says, what it doesn't say, and to get a perspective on the childcare need in Fannie County. I did want to point out really quick, though, that when we do childcare, it's not just something we're doing about the seat of our pants. I'll show you some of the stuff that we've been doing. This is our two days' worth of, of slides and everything that we do for the bootcamps that we've been doing. This is made custom for each community, so we do basically this same thing for the different communities that's come in, like Salina and, and different counties like that. Also, when we have those bootcamps and we talk to communities about childcare, we also provide them with research. And so here is three hundred and sixty pages worth of research that we provide every community. So in case they have to stand in front of their county and, and defend why childcare is important, we give them all this. And this isn't all the research there is, this is just all the research that's important. And then there's a twenty-one page guide that we have to summarize that, so because nobody wants to read that. So here's a twenty-one page thing that we do to summarize it. So this is just kind of the stuff that we do all over, and one of the things that we really focus on is on understanding that childcare aware data. So let's, who's my point to, to switch slides? All right, so we'll, I'm going to switch, patch this slide. Okay, so the first thing, the two things that I really want to address is that the nature of childcare issues is the same across the state. And we need to talk about that a little bit. And then the second thing we need to talk about is what does the childcare aware data say? What is the actual need versus kind of what does it say? So this is the chart that, that was presented in the supply and demand report, which is this report right here. And, and as soon as I saw this, we actually got on the phone with them and said, hey, you need to worry about your coloring because the darkest color that you see there is in the middle, which is not in there. So it's really hard to see what's going on if we just look at this. If we go to the next slide, I re-colored it so that the darker red you get, the bigger issue we have with childcare in these areas. And, and now once we recall this, we can really start to see, there is needs for childcare across the whole state, but it really is concentrated in western Kansas, especially western Kansas around the areas that we're at. Those dark, dark red mean that there are no slots available in those communities for childcare. So the other thing we have to look at when we look at this data is we notice that Fannie County doesn't look too bad, actually. And there's two reasons that is. The number one reason, which isn't obvious, is when they pulled this data, a local childcare center was just ramping up, so there were slots available at this young age that weren't filled yet. We called them up and said, what's going on here? And they, they, they talked with us about how this map was made, and they said, actually, if we would do this map right now, you'd be above that, that thirty to forty range. Okay, so we'd be in that, we'd be in that middle dark red color and not the darkest red. The other thing we need to do when we're looking at this map is, and, and we, we don't really have to do this as much as we used to anymore, but anytime that Dodge City has a high number, liberal has a high number, but Fannie County has a lower number, the first thing we need to be thinking is, is this based on 2010 undercount census data? And yes, this is. So they're undercounting our population from what that undercount was to what our correct count in 2020 is, they're undercounting it by, we need to add about twenty percent, twenty-five percent to our population. So not only did they, did they pull this data at a time where we had slots that weren't necessarily slots that's been open forever or, or long-term opening, but they also undercounted our population a lot. So just to know out of this, there is a difference in the need for childcare. It is concentrated in western Kansas, and there's a little bit of issues with the map here. The other thing we need to note before we go to the next slide is, look at all those counties that have no slots available. And we don't know if that's because they don't have childcare at all, or they do have childcare, but they're filled, but they have no slots available, all those counties. And if we go to the next slide, look at how many of those people are coming in to Fannie County to work. So when we're talking about needs and we're talking about these childcare aware data and stuff like that, we're just talking about the population of Fannie County. We're not even talking about the population of our other counties that are around that are coming into Fannie County to work. This is a commuting map, so who's commuting in to Fannie County to work? If they don't have any childcare slots available in their counties, they're going to be relying on our county to be providing those childcare slots when they come into work. So that's another thing that we need to keep in mind when we're looking at this data. Okay, next slide. Okay, so here's the, here's the point-in-time childcare aware data, and this is a brand-new tool that the Childcare Aware made this year. It's actually really good. The first thing we need to note is when they say point-in-time, that means when they're pulling the data, you are getting a accurate polling of the data that just happened. The thing we have to remember, though, is that data that's underlying might not be updated every single day or every single week or even every single quarter. Actually, I think quarter is the, is about where some of this data is always updated. So even though we're pulling it, it is generated right at that time, like this, this report was generated November twenty-ninth, some of that data is still October or, or older than that sort of stuff. So we need to, we need to keep in mind that this is pulled data, but it doesn't mean it's actually what's going on right now. And the two things we need to look at when we look at this data is down in that childcare facility, so the block that's down here, there's that childcare facility, and the top two lines there are childcare centers and Head Start. And so what we need to discuss there, because that's the biggest delta that we have between the number of kids enrolled and the desired capacity. So we need to talk about why there's a difference between the number of kids enrolled and that desired capacity that they have. So we actually went ahead and, and talked to all the centers, talked to Head Start, and we get these counts. Okay. So let's look at these a little bit more, and we actually have updated numbers that aren't, I think the childcare center numbers, some of those were updated in October or even further back than October. So if we do current, looking at those childcare centers, there's three childcare centers listed in Fannie County, Y M C A is one of them, and they have no three or under, they're just four and five-year-olds. They're full at twelve and twelve. Community daycare is full at ninety-seven and ninety-seven, and then Turning Point Nazarene is at thirty out of fifty. So out of just those three centers, we have a hundred and thirty-nine out of a desired capacity of one hundred and fifty-nine, which means our capacity for those centers right now is at eighty-seven percent. And if we look at the waitlist for those three centers, we have actually seventy-eight kids on waitlist. Okay? So we do have way more kids trying to get into childcare than actually, than, than just that, that, the difference between the desired capacity and the enrolled. And remember, not every solution is going to be working for everybody. We're going to have different differences in age groups of, that are available to go in, times, what kind of care that they have. The other big difference that we have, so if we look at the report, they have a, a number of childs enrolled, and Head Start is eighty-five, desired capacity is a hundred and twenty-four. So I brought this up to Janine Radke, the, our local Head Start director, and said, what's going on here? What numbers are getting pulled? And she says, I have no idea what's going on. Let me give you the actual data. So we went in and called, and we, we got all the Fannie County things, and I'm not going to go through every single step there, but you can see, and when I actually talked to her about the number of kids enrolled and the desired capacity for each of those classrooms, we have a hundred and twenty-seven enrolled, the desired capacity is a hundred and thirty-two, which gives us a capacity of ninety-six percent with a waitlist for them of a hundred and fifteen. There is some issues that we can talk about between desired capacity with Head Start and licensed capacity. Right now, they have to reduce the number of classroom sizes because of COVID. They've had some teacher issues because of COVID where they'd have to combine classes and stuff like that. But there is a big, I mean, we're talking about ninety-six percent of the spots available for Head Start are full as well. So it's not exactly what's reported there. And when we talked to childcare where, because we called it childcare where to talk about this report, and they said, yeah, there's different ways that we pull Head Start for different counties. It's, it's, it gives you a rough idea, but we, you need to talk to the local area to get the actual count that we see. So this is, this is, we actually talked to Janine to get these counts for childcare aware. Okay, next slide. So if we go through and go put that, the actual data from our local data poll in there, we have enrolled of eight hundred and four, we have desired capacity of eighty, eight hundred and twenty-one. So that gives us our overall childcare right now at ninety-seven point nine percent desired capacity. So we're talking about, the first thing we need to do is make sure we fill that gap between desired capacity and enrolled. We did that, and we did it just by checking the actual data. So if we go to the next slide, I believe my, yes. So here's a, here's a graph. So we have the capacity, the desired capacity, we have the enrolled, that childcare where said in that point in time. If we actually go call in the data and get the actual counts, we get the corrected enrolled. So we've gone from, and I know you don't, especially people on there don't like it, but we're going from this much gap between that white blue and the dark blue to this much gap between the teal and the dark blue. But the thing that I want to say, and, and, and we're at, sorry, ninety-six percent capacity, but the thing that we need to remember, isn't that gap there. That's not the, that's not the big deal. That's not what we're dealing with. Next slide. The thing, when we called childcare aware and they said, why are you looking down here? This isn't where you need to be looking at for, for the childcare needs in Fannie County. You're at twenty-six percent desired capacity met. You're at two thousand four hundred need, slots that are needed overall. Why aren't you looking at that? And we're like, that's the numbers we used, we are looking at that. But to graphically put that up there, next slide, that red bar is the bar that we need to be addressing. So we're, we're talking about, we have all these things that we can argue about, well, maybe we shouldn't get, we shouldn't care that much about these point-in-time counts and stuff like that. We're talking about, should it be this big or this big between desired capacity and actual use? And we have this red bar that's the actual childcare where estimate and need that's huge. So when we're talking about the childcare need, we can't, we don't need to, we shouldn't get lost on that, are we filling every single little slot? Because we definitely have way more need than any of our childcare right now can be providing, even if we're at a hundred percent, even at a hundred and twenty percent, even at a hundred and thirty percent. We need so much more than just the capacity that we already have. We need so much more than just the capacity that we already have. Go to the next slide, there's just a couple things. So, this is, you've seen this before, I know you've, I mean, we've been, I've been doing this for, some of that stuff is five years old. So, you've seen this before, but here's an updated estimate, this is up to the 2020 census numbers, so you can kind of see how they're divided, what's the childcare needs overall in Finy County. And we see that we're estimated about 1,600 childcare slots short from what we have. Next slide, please. A couple of things about childcare aware, they strive to ensure that families have access to affordable, high-care quality. They lead a project support trainings and so forth. And their goal is always to support community partners in their efforts to expand access to affordable, high, where, high-quality childcare. Childcare aware has been great in this last couple of weeks, where we've been going and trying to understand what's going on in the report, pulling the data, they've been very helpful to say, hey, make sure you're looking at this number, not this number, and here's what's going on here. So, they're very supportive of, of efforts like this. Next slide, there's a conclusion inside this report here, which this is a special challenges of during the pandemic report. And I highlighted in here what I wanted to say from it. So, they say, while the impact of COVID-19 will be felt for many years to come, we have an opportunity to transform our childcare system in ways that supports our ability to adapt and respond to outside influences, while continuing to recognize the essential value of equitable access, quality, and affordability of care to young children, families, businesses, and communities. Together, we can create long-term innovative, innovative solutions that ensure reliable access to high-quality, affordable childcare for every Kansas family. So, that's gonna be pretty much mine, the rest of my slides, and my part that we get, before we get back to Lana, is just in writing, so you have pieces of paper that say what I've just been saying. So, the next slide, summary of the issues, remember, we're talking about the census numbers and stuff like that, so this is about that map. Next slide, some of that point in time data, remember, we need to focus on, we're only meeting 26% of the childcare need. We have some childcare capacity there, data. Go ahead. Some of that Head Start stuff. One thing I do, the, the report is not pulled fully correctly. And one example of that really not working out, just to show that you can't just take whatever that's coming out of that point in time, if you look at Ford County, they say they have 244 kids in Head Start with a desired capacity of 10. So, we know that 244 in there, desired capacity 10, something's not right there. So, and it's, it's not consistent through all the different counties. And that is mine. Any questions on that? I know that was a bunch of data and maps and stuff like I always do, and fast talking, and...
Mr. Chairman? Just a question of clarification on the chart, and I can't see the little number, but you had the, understanding the problem and the numbers, and you had on preschools, enrolled 79, desired capacity 58, school-age programs, enrolled 92, desired capacity 63. I'm having trouble making sense of that on how we can have more than what the desired capacity is, so help me understand.
Yeah, so this is, so you're probably looking at this number here, this chart here?
I think so.
Yeah, and that's, and this is still all pulled still from that childcare aware point in time data. And so, we still have to remember that we are talking about desired capacity, that means they could have licensed more than desired. But in, in general, we're talking about how many kids should be in a center, or at home, in a home care setting. It should be whatever that provider says, this is how many ideally I would take. If it was up to me, I would take five kids, or a center would say I would take 50 kids, or whatever. That enrolled is the actual number that's in, that's there. So, the license, so desired is saying, this is how many I'd like to have, so five. A home center could be licensed, though, for 10 kids. And so, what this is saying, and some of these, like in the preschools or school-age programs, there's actually more kids enrolled in those programs than those programs actually would like to have. In an ideal situation, they would like to have less kids, which means there's even more desire for more programs, because we're enrolling more kids than these places even want to have. That doesn't mean that they're breaking licensing or anything, they probably are licensed for that, but...
That was part of the, the gist of my question, because I can see where desired capacity would be equal to or greater than enrolled. When it's less than, it...
That mean, yeah, that means...
Licensing questions and so forth.
Yeah, and, and, and it's not a licensing issue, it'd be more of, these providers know that this is such a need, that they're going more, they're taking more kids in than what they say they would like to take in, in an ideal world, so. But, good, good question, good point, and good point of that, that is from childcare aware data polling as well.
Thank you. Shannon, a quick question, the desired capacity, is that their break-even point?
No. And so, desired capacity is literally, they say, what are you licensed for? And that's licensed capacity. And, and usually, when you make a center or you do a home daycare, you're gonna license for as many as you can, in case you need to do that. But the other thing is, they say, okay, how many would you like to have? And, and that could be, I mean, it could be some, some grandma that just says, hey, I'm licensed, I went through all the steps, I can have eight kids, but really, I'm doing this just for the two neighbors. I'd like to have two. And, and so, when childcare aware is compiling this, and they're talking to all those different people, organizations, they're, they're literally saying, how many do you desire for your center?
On a business standpoint, where is there...
It, it will be completely different, it will be different for every group. If, if we're talking about a home daycare, where they're not paying rent, they're not paying utilities because the people who are living there are paying those, that break, that break-even point will be completely different than somebody else who's running a childcare center. So, and, so they're, so this, the enrolled, desired capacity, licensed capacity, does not have anything to do with what we could financially support inside Finy County. And that's, that's kind of the role of, of the Early Childhood Network, is to be able to counsel those people on saying, hey, make sure you're looking at your finances. When you are licensed for 63, you might want to make sure you only enroll 50, so you don't have to have that executive director. But that has nothing to do with what's getting pulled in this data here.
So, they don't, they don't publish, really?
No, but nobody's even really looking at what's financially viable as numbers, yeah. I think Lana wants to get up here, so...
No, you're fine.
Where you get...
Yeah.
Your red chart with estimated need.
Yep.
I'm gonna hypothetically, let's, let's pick on empirical, it's gonna be online pretty soon. Do you have a guesstimate on how many, per, say this business needs 200 employees, how many children are we talking about? Do you have a guesstimate that comes out of that 200?
Um, I would, I would, and it's gonna be different based on your unemployment rate of your county, it's gonna be different based on, and the reason that is, because are you bringing people in from outside, or are you just hiring people from within, and so forth? I'm estimating, if I look at some of the data, I'm saying, I'm saying about probably a third of those will need childcare at some point. But the thing we need to remember with something like empirical, is we have those jobs that are direct jobs, which is about 300, but then we have the induced-in jobs. So, like with DFA, we have the milk plant, but then we also have just as many jobs in trucking that came along with it. So, we're looking at about 1,000 jobs with that. So, I would say there's probably about the need for about 300 extra slots that are gonna be coming in with that development. That is not included in any numbers here, this is just looking what we have right now in past.
That's not included in your report?
Right, right. And so, remember, that's not 300 families, that'd be 300 individual kids. So, there's probably one family that needs three slots, and a bunch of families that need zero, so. But I would kind of estimate around that 300 more that we would be looking at.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right. So, now you're out of charts, and you're just into words, sorry. All right, so, the solutions that were suggested by iParametrics, we just wanted to take a moment to answer to those. So, the first one here is, if you want to go to the next screen, thank you. Short term, create a local sustainable solution. You have known about that sustainable solution for a very long time. Commissioner Pishney made that comment, that he didn't learn anything new from that last childcare presentation, because you've been hearing it all of these years. We've been talking to you about the need to have a local sustainable answer. And, so, again, that already exists. We were the first county in Kansas to create something of that nature, and that's a large part of why we have been called upon and now offer those childcare boot camps, is because communities realize that what we've put together is what every community needs to be planning for, for the long term. The next solution was provide grants with ARPA funds for equipment, training, and staff retention. One of the stated goals of the network is certainly to provide those, those grants, and ultimately have money available that we're able to help home childcare facilities, faith-based, center-based, whatever it is. We certainly want to do that. However, the idea of providing grants for staff salaries somewhat horrifies us. The idea that it would be, it would be smart to, to give people bonus money, if you will, that they would pay their, their workers with, that isn't sustainable going forward, that seems like a disaster in the making in our minds. We certainly would not ever suggest that folks do something like that. Again, the idea of the network and the business model that we've created allows for higher wages for those childcare workers ongoing, which is supported by the business, by the income-generating business of the center itself, not relying on grant dollars and hoping that federal or state monies come through to subsidize. The next slide is monitor state and federal developments, and we would tell you, we certainly are monitoring state and federal developments. I'm serving on two of the statewide agencies that will determine where those federal dollars go once they get to our state. So, I can assure you, we are very well aware of what those opportunities may be, but we would also caution you with the Build Back Better, there was a push to, you know, let's see if that, if that gets passed, and if it gets passed, let's see if that won't fix the childcare problem. We've been watching this development from the very beginning. One of the big pushes is to really focus on universal pre-K. We've talked to you guys about this before, that's the three-to-five-year-old's child that's not quite ready for kindergarten yet. The problem with creating universal pre-K is that it takes those slots away from centers. And those three, four, and five-year-olds are what we have to have in place in order to pay for that higher-priced care of the infants, the zero-to-three-year-olds that get talked about very, very often. And when you're looking at these shortages, that's our big area. I know you've heard that as well, Commissioner Jones, that it's, it's happening, that, that we, the waitlists we're seeing at our childcare facilities are almost always in that zero-to-18-month range, because we simply don't have enough slots for them. So, we would tell you, there could actually be a situation where the BBBA would actually hamper the efforts to keep childcare centers afloat. The next slide just goes a little deeper into that, I'm not gonna cover all of that, but part of what you see with this is that this legislation is really aimed toward lower-income families. And as we've talked about before, we've raised the minimum, the median household income in Finy County enough, and wages continue to go up, that we're starting to struggle with qualifying for a lot of these programs. Part of the, the issue with some of those openings that Head Start has had is because families simply aren't qualifying anymore for the lower-income services, because their incomes have come up significantly, based on the jobs that we've created and the quality of the jobs that we've created. I highlighted a couple of things on the next slide that you guys can certainly read, but again, we think there could be challenges with utilizing that program for the family side of it. Now, there are dollars in the Build Back Better that are dedicated to states to determine how best to meet childcare within their own states. And we think there could be some benefit to that. However, there's some, there's some hooks in that, and they have to show that they've been making an appropriate effort. Who gets to decide whether or not Kansas has made an appropriate effort already in order to qualify for those funds? But as we've told you from the very beginning, we saw this mandate coming, we saw that there would either be a state or a federal mandate at some point for childcare and for early learning. Our concern is if we don't utilize a model that pays for itself and allows the business activities to fund the childcare facility, we'll end up with unfunded mandates down the road. We know how this happens. If we just rely on state and federal dollars to come in and build it for us, and we don't worry about the business model, 10 years from now, 12 years from now, a commission is gonna be sitting there trying to figure out how they fund their childcare centers that they had to create, but are no longer being funded through state and federal funding. So, we think it's wise to have centers that have a model that supports them. Any questions on any of that?
Questions?
All right. So, the next slide, we just wanted to talk about, they talk about partnering with local employers. Again, you are all very well aware that we have done just that. We've worked with our largest employer, we work with every new employer, we've worked with empirical already on how we'll meet their needs. We're working with housing developers. Every time we talk to a housing developer, we're talking about building in childcare when we know that they're creating enough housing units to demand another childcare facility. We don't ever want to be in the position that we're in now, where we're trying to figure out how to catch up. So, again, incent new development, once local capacity is fully leveraged, Shannon's that obviously showed you, we have fully leveraged childcare as it stands today. This is an opportunity for us to, to meet future demand and to grow as needed as we bring new residents to the community. Okay, the next slide. And the other way that we've really utilized our employers and the private sector is we've ensured that they're represented on our Board of Directors. So, right now, the Finy County Childcare and Early Learning Network Board of Directors is Chairman Ashley Byer, she is with Tyson, she does their human resources. Vice Chairman is Sean O'Rourke from St. Catherine Hospital. The Treasurer is Tyler Widdam from Western State Bank. Secretary is Courtney Branham from Garden City Community College. Finy County is represented by Robert Reese. City of Garden City is represented by Matt Allen. And then we have early childhood experts, Jeanette Turpin, who also teaches the early childhood program at the, at the high school. Kansas Children's Service League, the Head Start program, is represented by Tessa Smith. Mary Carlin represents USD 457, and I represent FCEDC on that board. So, again, we, we ensured that the Board of Directors itself has that same approach. We have the private sector, the public sector, and the early childhood experts all involved in making the decisions for that network. Any questions on that? Okay, and then finally, and there were some questions brought up about the Third Street Building, and I just wanted to point out that timeline. And so, just a reminder how that all came to be. When we started recruiting Midwest Health to build a new facility, which ultimately became Ranch House, we had early discussions with them about what would happen with that building on Third Street. It was not a great building, it wasn't gonna be usable for a lot, but we felt like it was an ideal location to get some childcare. They were willing to sell it to us for a very agreeable price, and it came with the additional lots that were behind that building. We came to you guys when we had that price initially, we came to our, to our partners to talk about that building. We went to the community college, we went to the city of Garden City and to Finy County with that information. At that time, you guys didn't come up with a plan, none, you, the city of Garden City, nor the community college, nobody had a plan for how to access owning that building and making the improvements necessary. So, a couple of private individuals who are actively engaged in those discussions came to us with the offer to purchase it and renovate it and have it ready for childcare. So, we just want to make sure that it's on the record and clear that, that certainly was, was done out of the desire to help meet childcare demand, and not a desire to get rich off the system, if you will. So, next steps, what happens if we get these, these funds put together, what will happen? Well, that will take care of the launch for the, for the network. That gets the Third Street Center opened, and that Third Street Center is designed to house not only a childcare facility, but also the executive director offices, as well as the training facility for our high school and community college students who need that in-the-classroom opportunity to get their, their certificates and degrees. From there, we'll move to East Garden Village facilities. We're already working with Rob Martin on building some facilities out there that will help us get some ramped-up demand pretty quickly, specifically for the folks who live in the, in that neighborhood, but should be an opportunity to get at least two facilities up and running in there. And then Hunters Glen Housing Development, that's a north Third Street, they've already designed in the childcare facility within that development, and have already visited with the network about the potential of the network leasing that space and, and operating that childcare center. And then Lost River Housing Development, which is up just north of Pioneer, and they've also included a childcare center in their development, and it's in a phase that it hasn't been plotted yet, but it is drawn in on all of their long-term planning. So, anything I can answer on that, before we turn it over to our chairman to finish up?
I have about three questions regarding the Third Street property. If money is allocated, Lana, who's gonna own the building?
Yeah, that's, that's still up to the board to full, you know, to, to fully determine how that works. We had a question early on about the ability of the network to own it, because the other half of the building, as you know, is occupied by the Makerspace, and there was concern about the network having any income not derived from the provision of childcare. of childcare. However, our Treasurer, Tyler, has done some, some research on that and feels like there's an option out there that a, a different entity related to the network could own the building and still make it available to the maker space without, without jeopardizing the 501(c)(3) status of the network.
You didn't answer my question. Your, what different entity? I mean, what?
It would be, it would be another childcare, it would be another related entity to the network, but it would be one that was set up. The network has been set up to drive its income from provision of childcare. So we don't want to, to risk that 501(c)(3) status by having income from a different source. So it would be another related facility or 501(c)(3). It would just be created kind of as an umbrella to that, that would be allowed to own property. That's the direction they're leaning right now, but the board hasn't taken action on that for certain.
And then I have a couple more questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
How many dollars are you guys requesting for this?
You know, the city allocated $600,000 to this. I think the, the goal of the network all along was that it would be an equal effort between the city and the county to ensure that that gets launched.
Okay, and finally, I have a question about staffing. Are there enough qualified or, or certifiable daycare teachers or persons who they could employ in this community to, to run something like that?
Right. So one of the, one of the real goals that we've continuously worked towards with the network is ensuring that we're getting enough students interested in early childhood education and that we're giving them opportunities to utilize their skills. So we're graduating several students every year from just the high school who are in a position to actually be center directors. And when they graduate, they've got all of the training they need that they can go in and, and actually hold that, that highest-level position in a 59 center. So, yes, we're, we're preparing those students. Would it be easy to ramp up a brand-new facility? Are those employees sitting around doing nothing? No. I mean, it's, it's still going to take an effort, just like it does for any other business that we're trying to fill positions for. But certainly, we believe that we've put everything in place that allows us to be in a better position than we would be otherwise. And the other thing that is different is that we pay, the model that, that we've designed pays all of the staff on par with the school district. So whatever level of education they're bringing to the early childhood center, they're going to get paid the same as they would get paid if they were working in the school district in that same type of position. So that makes a huge difference. Most of your childcare pays minimum wage. And as you can imagine, it's pretty hard to get people excited about working in early childhood for minimum wage when they can work at TJ Maxx and get a discount for more than that, so.
Question on the, when the city committed these funds, did they commit them to their early learning network?
Yes, they gave all of the funds to the early learning.
That one, okay.
Yep, so those funds are already in the account with Fannie County Childcare and Early Learning Network. And there's been a question about how did the city know to do that? Well, the city looked at the requests that had been brought forward to the county with the original dollars that came in, and they, so they knew what needs were out there that had not been funded and hadn't been, been met. And that's where they opted to, to utilize their dollars.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, my question is more about capacity than the dollars themselves. So capacity of the Third Street, and I'm back to that chart that I was quizzing Shannon about, it'd be under childcare centers, but what would that do to our, I mean, how much would that increase our capacity?
In the short term, 59. And you guys know that that's a magical number in childcare, for whatever reason, 59 is the number. And so in the short term, it would be 59 slots. The reason for that is because once we license for over that, we have to have that executive director position. And we've talked to you guys at length about how that position is what, what takes a center from being in the black, $60,000, to in the negative instead. So we want to ensure that we're utilizing the model that we've designed because that's the model that makes sense. But that's also why we have those, at that last page there, why I show those other centers. Once we're able to open even one more center, but we do have two planned for East Garden Village, but once we have one more besides Third Street, then we're in a position where we can hire that executive director and we can increase the capacity. Because obviously, the Third Street Center is larger than a 59 child center. It just, we won't license all of the classrooms until we have that, that second center.
And then my follow-up question, thank you for that.
Sure.
But follow-up question then, is there was a chart on page 12, I guess. When I put that in sunlight, I can see those. That said, under one, one-year-old, two-year-olds, and so forth. So the, the Third Street Center is focused on three to five, on zero to three, or what is it focused?
So the four-classroom model, or the 59 child, in, in a perfect world, that's four classrooms, that's, that's the way to do it. But when we're talking about those 59 and under centers, what you have are three classrooms, three-to-five-year-olds, and typically, one classroom of the zero to three-year-olds. So, again, you know, where we talked about those three-to-five-year-olds are really the, the funding mechanism, if you will, that allows the center to operate in the black and pay the staff appropriate wages. So, yes, it will have, and we, we license centers differently. If you look at, like, for instance, community daycare, they, which is the real common way to do it, they do zero to 12 months, 13 to, to 24 months. You know, their, their classrooms are broken up by one year at a time. The way that the network is designed, those are mixed-age classrooms. So that infant room is really zero to two and a half years of age, and then the preschool classrooms are two and a half to five. It allows more flexibility for the executive director and for the teachers to make determinations about which students are ready to move up to the next level and so forth. Great question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess I'm still slow to catch on your learning development. Okay, so if we match the city, how, how long do you think those funds can last putting these programs together you're talking about? Is this a?
Right, the funds pay them, the, the programs will support themselves. So the, the money that we're asking for is just to successfully launch the network. It's to, it's to take ownership of the Third Street Building so that we have the first childcare center off the ground, and we have the executive offices and training facility ready. That's the, that's the underpinning to all of this working, is we have to have that executive office, and we have to have the training facility. Once we have those in place, then the rest of these centers can launch. But the center will pay for itself. So the money that we're asking for is just that upfront capital to, to purchase the building and get it underway. Beyond that, they're sustainable on their own. We don't, we don't put money towards increasing childcare wages or anything like that out of grant money, if you will. We just don't think that's sustainable. So we've preferred to create a business model that works so that that doesn't have to be done on an ongoing basis, and we don't have to be having a bake sale every other month to support the facility.
I don't know about bake sale, but burritos would be.
Not that we don't want to have sales, yeah.
I use those once a month.
There you go.
It's a story.
We're going to remember you said that when we have burritos ready.
So 1.2 will get it off the ground?
Yeah, that's correct.
And we're, you're not going to, early learning network is.
Fachellen.
Yes, Fachellen. Is not getting funds from other employers, or are they?
Yes, yeah, they will. The, the other employers, their interest is in supporting, obviously, facilities for their workforce children, and, which is great. And so the, the plan we've got with a couple of them is a subsidy where they're paying the majority of their workforce childcare, which does nothing to build a center, as you can imagine, but it certainly does create a very sustainable income for the center. So it makes the center make a lot of sense when you know that pretty much your slots are guaranteed to be filled, but also to be paid for on a regular basis, and you're not collecting in arrears, if you will. Beyond that, we also have secured community service tax credits that we're selling to offer some additional support to the network. Plus, we're applying for every grant program that comes in. For instance, the, the classrooms, the fixtures and equipment for the classrooms out on Third Street, we've got a grant to pay for those. We've got a $100,000 grant that we were able to, to secure to pay for those items outside of the capital that we're asking for. So, and we'll continue to do that. We're good, quite frankly, with applying for grants for programming and, and for equipment and those types of things. Where we have an issue with grants would be offsetting salaries. It just, you end up chasing your tail with nonprofits trying to keep getting the next year's funds put in place. And we believe it should be run like a business and provide the highest quality childcare we can.
Let him go first, and I want to come back, please.
Go ahead. Since I've been on this commission, you've been working on this childcare situation.
Mm-hmm.
Years, years, years. Early Learning Center is the accumulation of all that effort, then?
Yep, Fannie County Childcare and Early Learning Network, Fachellen, is, you're good, is, is the culmination of those efforts, for sure. You know, when it was brought to us as an issue, we, we tried to make it somebody else's problem, much like we did with senior living. But it became pretty obvious to us that it wasn't, there wasn't going to be a private solution. That's what we tried. We, we went after private providers. The problem is that while they were available, they were extraordinarily expensive and would have increased childcare costs for our families by about a factor of three every week. Our families can't do that. And it became pretty apparent to us that it was an economic development issue because if we can't provide care at a price that our families can afford, we're doing nothing to build our workforce for tomorrow. So, yeah, the network is the culmination of our understanding that a public-private solution is the only route that you can develop sustainably without ongoing benefactors. And quite frankly, we come at this from a very private-sector standpoint. We think it should be a business model that works and then ensure that you're providing the highest level of early learning and childcare.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm coming back with another question for two reasons. One, I wanted to keep us focused on the Third Street property for a little while. And secondly, I didn't want Commissioner Dris starting his clock.
Can it start?
But, oh, you, I don't care. On the, your next steps, your last page of the PowerPoint.
Yes, sir.
My, and, and I'm so focused on capacity. Yeah, leave that one up that was on the screen, that you just had on the screen, whoever's running the computer over here. That page 12, I think it was, yeah, that one. And because it all ties to this page where we're talking about capacity and demand and so forth. And I understand business models and 59, so you don't have to have that extra expense and so forth and so on. My question, though, on beyond Third Street, is you've referenced East Garden Village, Hunter's Glen, Lost River. What kind of capacity are we looking at with each of those? The planning's underway for East Garden Village, included in the Platts, and so forth and so on.
Right, East.
So what, what will that do to our numbers as far as childcare slots shortage?
Sure, great question. So the East Garden Village facilities will not be 59 children centers in each building, and that is just the limitation of the physical space we have available to us. So because Mr. Martin has designed those utilizing former mobile homes and, and found a way to permanent, you know, permanently affix those and make those an actual physical structure for us to utilize, but we're limited on the size of those. So those centers are, I think the number came out like 44, maybe? Still, though, we've incorporated that, that zero-to-three-year-old classroom because we do know that that infant care is so important. And we can afford to be undersized in those facilities because the cost to operate them is so much less than, you know, a brick building. So the lease is much lower, and the utilities are lower on those facilities. So we can, we can still make the numbers work. So those, I, don't quote me on that, but I think they're 44.
Looking for approximate.
Yeah, a, a center. And then when you look at Hunter's Glen and Lost River, those are both designed with the 59 center model in place. The Hunter's Glen one, that, the childcare center will actually be part of a larger community center space that they're looking at putting in the facility. And then in Lost River, it's actually part of one of the apartment complexes where they've built in the early childhood center. But again, focusing on hitting that 59 so that we make sure that it continuously supports itself.
So it could be another 150 slots approximately?
Yeah, so 40, 80, and, yeah, and 120, yeah. About 200 with just those facilities that we're talking about.
Oh, plus, plus Third.
Plus Third Street, sure. And then, you know, again, we would, we would say that certainly with Hunter's Glen, with Lost Rivers, if they wanted to, you know, the network does not have to be the tenant for those. So if they wanted to perhaps bring in a Montessori or something, you know, some specialty childcare facility, they can certainly partner with outside entities to do that as well. We don't care, from the network side, we don't care who operates it. We just want to make sure that it's available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Jones.
You keep referring to 59. Is that a KDHE number?
Right, so when you hit 60, you're, you're required to have an executive director position. That individual does not count in your ratios. So this is all based on ratios of how many care providers we have to have for each child, depending on their age. KDHE says you can have this many kids for this many adults. So that 59 becomes the magical number because once we go over that, we have this position that is the highest-paid position in the, the center and cannot be counted as one of the adults to the children ratio. So until you get back to around 220 kids in a center, that executive director position doesn't pay for itself.
So who says they're going to keep it at 59?
Who says who is? KDHE? Yeah, no guarantees, no guarantees. That can certainly change. We don't see that in, anything happening anytime soon. KDHE is set up very much as an administrative rule. So when it comes to childcare, there's very little legislative input. It is, it is really designated to KDHE as administrative rule, and pretty much, they make those decisions, so. And we're not arguing that ratios make sense. We absolutely believe that, that, you know, they, these laws, these rules were made with the best information they had available. And we certainly don't want to operate a baby ranch, right? We're not trying to open the Sam's Club of childcare because we recognize that there is, there's a breaking point. So it's not just important that we have, again, a sustainable model, but it also has to provide the highest quality of childcare and early learning that we can because that's how we're going to better prepare our community going forward. It's going to save us money on K-12 education. It's going to save us money on community corrections. You know, all of the special education, so many of those things that we're spending money on as taxpayers today, we can actually save ourselves by building a better product to begin with, instead of paying for warranty work down the road.
Right now, thank you.
Yeah, I think our chairman is going to finish off, and then we're done.
I have, Bob, just a second. Do we have Jeff on the line?
He was.
Yeah, well, hang on a minute. We'll give, Jeff, we got one more, and then we'll come to you.
Mine's very, very simple. And just in closing, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and share the view of the Fannie County Childcare Early Learning Network studies that have been going on for all of these years. Commissioner Dris, as you mentioned, it has been a topic. And all of this information that was presented today has been available to you through your representative to the board. And we ask you to take one more look and take a serious look because we were very, very nervous that you would have taken the information given you at the last meeting and said, wait a minute, what have those guys been feeding us all of these last few years as we've gone through? But we ask you to be the last key investor in the Fannie County Childcare Early Learning Network. And it is Fannie County, right there on the very front. And so if maybe you wanted to put a little more than the city did, that would be fine. We would certainly appreciate it. But thank you for listening to us today, and now we'll let Jeff speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Jeff, good morning. Sorry for the long wait here, but it's an important topic, so the floor is yours.
It's a critically important topic, Mr. Chairman. So I, I completely agree. And, you know, as, as I listened to the presentation, you know, they, by no means did I, I want my previous comments to be indicative that the Fannie County Early Learning Network had done a ton of work and research in this. I do think, you know, kind of what I wanted to bring forward and what I tried to bring forward last time, is there's also a short-term issue. I think long-term, hands down, we've all agreed, you know, ever since we've done the Spark Survey, that childcare is an issue within the county, but also sustainable childcare, as Lana indicated before, is, is really critical. And I think we need to do a little focus work on the existing childcare entities to make sure that they're sustainable. And I think we need to do a little focus work on the existing childcare entities to make sure that they're sustainable. Because as was discussed, we've got some workforce issues that we need to deal with. We've got some things that we need to go forward. So, you know, the data's been covered. I think, you know, Shannon did an excellent job, you know, the childcare aware data is only so good. And and as you saw, that 26% capacity is a big deal, you know, in terms of things. But we also do have some open slots. And I think there's some additional capacity that's, you know, locally that I think can be maximized. Not necessarily to the percentages, you know, the 96%, but I think there's additional work, again, if we go back to some training. So again, really what we presented to you is some short-term solutions, not in any way diminishing some of the long-term work that needs to be done. But post our discussion with the board, you know, on the 15th, we had multiple discussions with Russell Child Development Center. We researched other child growth grants and entities. And I think, you know, much to the point is creating sustainable childcare. I think right now, some of the capacity that exists locally isn't necessarily sustainable. You know, and and looking at forward to say, you know, how do we do some working capital and salaries? I agree with Lana's comment that it's not sustainable. Because, but short-term, we need to maybe shore that up because of the impacts with COVID on those centers and require business plan, business consulting to make sure that these centers have sustainable methods for the future. And I think that's very, very critical. You know, looking at, I think, the economics of the infant slot is very, very challenging. You know, as was indicated before, you know, it's one room for infants, three for, you know, older children. You know, and really try to look at priming that pump there and in trying to develop a little bit more sustainability to morph into the larger capacity facilities that are going there. And then really focusing in on workforce development. You know, North Carolina's got a great model, you know, a teach and wage subsidy incentivizing professional development. I think in the short-term, you know, trying to grow that a little bit, you know, as we, again, prime the pump on some of the workforce development, as we build capacity and look towards the future, I think it's going to be very, very critical. You know, and and understanding the board's priorities. You know, the Early Learning Network has, you know, 600,000 if you want to do some short-term stuff as well, you know, to maximize the capacity and your springboard into that longer-term development is going to be very, very critical. You know, obviously, long-term, you know, there are part, you know, there are private sector entities that are on the board and, but we also have to look, there's some, some need in non-working hour support. You know, those over at, you know, that build upon the, the levels, you know, the efforts of the Early Learning Network and really look to build new childcare capacity. In addition to what, you know, Fannie County Early Learning Network can do with tax credits and and a new facility, there's also the Russell Childcare Development. They've got a $3,000 family childcare grant where it helps people get new home daycares within there. Obviously, there's some skin in the game that they need to put in from a business perspective, but it allows them to incentivize that and get going and have some counseling support as well. So I think really what we're trying to say is look at a holistic solution. You've got short-term issues that you need to deal with that to allow for that capacity to be built on. The way I like to think about it is a foundation. There's been a lot of work that's done, a lot of research and tremendous education and involvement. But also, I think, within the existing capacity, there needs to be some work done on the foundation before you can build the bigger house. You know, and I think the bigger house is what's needed. You know, your families have grown it, you know, kind of staying on that same metaphor. But we need to look at that, that short-term piece as well, you know, to make sure that you have that sustainable workforce model, to make sure that the existing businesses that you have are sustainable on their own without subsidies and to to build that forward. Really, those are, you know, my comments today to you all and would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, hang on, Jeff, questions, anybody?
Jeff, so you're not, you're not considering the 600K as long-term?
No, I am considering the 600K as long-term. I would, I would look at that long-term, you know, as a long-term investment within childcare. I, what I'm also saying to you is that there are short-term issues that exist. You know, making sure that your existing centers have a sustainable workforce, have the ability to, you know, I, Lana said it and I presented at the last board meeting. I can, you, right now, there are some childcare centers that are paying $7.50 an hour. I can go and get a job at TJ Maxx, Target, anything else if I'm a, you know, resident and I'm making $15 an hour or getting discounts, you know, at these places. So it's, you know, there are, I think nationally, when you look at the problem, you know, it's a, an example for locally. You know, you have people that want to do this work, but they also have to make the economics work and support their families. You know, so if I can get double at a big box retail, or even if I can get $4 or $5 more an hour at a big box retail, you know, I can, I have to take care of my family at a certain point. So I think it's about creating sustainable wages and, you know, creating a situation that allows for more workforce development and tap into those people that want to do this work.
That's not our, our model, that's their business model. So it looks to me like, you know, that's a decision they have to make, you know, it's not publicly, you know, we shouldn't have to tell them how to run their business.
Commissioner, if I may, part of the, the network, the, the role of the network is an umbrella for childcare and early learning throughout. So the, the network will serve as a resource for training, for curriculum support, for business plan support. The network will absolutely serve as a support for that. So, yeah, we, we, we completely agree. The best thing we can do is make sure that everybody who's providing childcare within our community is providing it at the highest level and doing so sustainably for themselves. We met with the Community Daycare Board of Directors immediately after, after forming the network. We wanted to make sure they were aware that we have these resources available to you, we want to help you be sustainable. So they've already accepted that they're going to make some changes. The problem is, right now, they are the exact wrong size, not their fault. When they built it, it made sense to build it as large as they could. Unfortunately, they're really in that, the worst possible size position they can be. And so they're, they're challenged with that. However, we can't afford for them to not be operating at full capacity for what they're built at because we simply don't have other slots. Our hope is, once we're able to provide additional slots and reduce some of that pressure, they'll be able to right-size their facility as well so that they can meet this better business model. So absolutely, the, the plan for the network is to support all childcare, regardless of who owns it, regardless of who's operating it. But again, we have to get some capacity going before we can go and focus on right-sizing business models.
Thank you. Hang on a minute, Jeff, Robert, are you wanting to say something?
No, I just was going to ask Jeff if you had anything else, or you have anything else for us this morning? Any other comments?
You know, in, in terms of, I, I think Lana's comments just now, it is, it is about right-sizing your business model. But that's going to take some business plan consulting, you know, and Commissioner Jones, to what you were just asking, it's going to take some investment, you know, whether that's, you know, investment that these centers can make or may not be able to make themselves. But it is going to take some, some business plan consulting within that. I think, you know, some of the changes with regulations and COVID has significantly changed the environment. So supporting the existing capacity or readdressing the capacity is going to be critically important.
Mr. Chairman? Right ahead. Sustainability, it seems to me, I'm sure either Jeff or Lana's got a number for me. What is the average weekly charge for, let's say, a newborn? And is that a sustainable number?
I can answer for actual Kansas numbers, which is probably more important to you than, than any other numbers. Right now, the state average is around 195 a week for childcare. The childcare network, the challenge model calls for tuition to be 165 a week. One of the differences between the network model and the traditional business model for childcare is that typically childcare centers charge more for infant care and then reduce the price as the child ages out through the system. That's awesome, except that you don't have enough infants and you cannot charge infant families enough to, to actually pay for the required care. So our model instead sets a flat fee. Parents get used to paying 165 a week for their child and that follows them throughout the center. So we believe if you're offering a higher, a higher quality, you can afford to do that. And again, once a family is used to paying a set amount, why on earth would you reduce it as they go through the system? So 165 is what the network is set.
Is there a number that the public can accept?
Yes, yeah, so right now in Fannie County, the Community Daycare Center, again, once we met with them, they understood the logic behind our 165. And so they immediately sent out notice to their parents that they would be increasing their tuition costs. Yes, the families can bear it. Again, we've raised income levels enough that families can bear it. Certainly, again, the Build Back Better, if, you know, if it passes and it works and they're going to offset some of those, those costs for families, that's awesome. That's just an added benefit. The state of Kansas is looking at some additional legislation that would allow for some tax credits for employers. Again, those are, those are all positive things. We're going to take whatever we can to help families pay. But at 165, yes, it is sustainable for our families.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've done a little primitive figuring here. If we took 7.1 million, that's our total allocation, and we spent 3.5 million on sewer, that leaves 3,600,000. If we give the 600,000 to match the city for this, for the childcare, that leaves 3 million. If we give Ryan 225,000, that leaves 200 and, or 2,975,000. Is that, or 2,775,000, get my figures here right. We've got some priorities to figure out, guys. And with, with 2,775,000, can we do whatever else is on our wish list? So it's, it's time for.
Sorry, I laughed at her wish list, I thought sewer is kind of a necessity, my fault.
Okay, so, need some input? Are we ready to make some primitive decisions? Ready to table this, ready to, what are we ready to do?
Just take a break and walk around, kick the cat for a few minutes.
Jeff, do you want to stay with us through a break? Because Commissioner Dris, this time of the day, he needs a break, so.
I'll be here throughout, Commissioner.
All right, we'll take a 10-minute break and be back about 10:40, okay? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Money to pay their staff due to COVID keeping kids at home under quarantine. There are, Bob Kreischer pointed out at a break, another forty, how many, Bob, forty-eight? I know when I was county emergency manager some years ago, we had twenty-eight other daycare centers around. But if there are forty-eight, maybe some of those might be in a similar circumstance to the Nazarene Church. And so I'm wondering, would it be appropriate to set aside my thinking? Say a couple hundred thousand or whatever, put it in a zipped lockbox in case some other daycare center is short on funding for their staff, where we could treat them the same as we are, I guess, going to treat the Nazarene Church.
I think Jeff addressed that in his brief briefing as well. Jeff, you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, Robert Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I think that's spot on. There is going to be some short-term needs. I think the six hundred thousand, in my view, is always independent of the short-term need that you may have within your existing childcare networks. You know, and that's, I think it would be beneficial to set up a short-term grant program that's, you know, as you said, in a zipped lockbox, you know, a zipped cash bag, you know, and they apply for it as needed to be able to support, you know, existing capacity, shortfalls, and building things up, but also requiring, you know, a business plan consulting piece related to that to make sure that they're in the future sustainable.
Jeff, you and I are in agreement. I think all I'm saying is us, we need to determine an amount to put in that lockbox. And so as we entertain motions. We've got the county treasury oversees money.
Like we did the other programs with the Sparks funding.
Where's that three million now? It's in the county treasury, is it not?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So, I mean, if we trust her three million, we can surely trust her two hundred thousand.
Yep.
So. Is that a perplexing dilemma, or are we willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we match the city's contribution for six hundred thousand to the Fannie County. The FCCLN, can't say that word. And then it's into the motion. But then I would like to see our commission fill back up with five before we proceed with too many more of these expenditures on this ARC money.
Okay, that ought to be by next meeting, so.
I would second your motion, just to get it on the table.
Thank you.
Discussion?
I have to agree with the motion, but as far as the short-term cash inflows at private early childcare learning centers, I think somebody needs to oversee this that is in that business and not us, sorry.
So I'm not quite understanding.
Part of my emotion, that's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue, that's what I'm saying. I said I agreed with the motion. But just a discussion on other things tied to it or tied to this.
You're not in favor of putting some money in a?
Not really.
Okay.
I think if you want to do that, donate, give more money to their early childhood learning center and let them do it.
I'm not opposed to that either, but I'm saying we need to determine if there's an amount to put in that grant program, so.
Mr. Chairman, let me offer this suggestion because I think we've got a clean motion here with the six hundred thousand going to early learning, the community learning center, that we instruct staff to, whether they do it through resources at economic development or through other resources, the means that they get this information is up to the staff. But they do some research, if you will, to see if other daycare facilities, other childcare facilities are running into the same issue that the Nazarene Church childcare facility is with regard to COVID having a negative effect on paying salaries and keeping their centers open before we would make that decision, so.
That's reasonable.
And how staff decides to go about gathering some of that information. To me, that's a means issue, they can figure that out. But I think we offer that instruction to them to gather some information before we would go to that point.
Okay, so let's vote on the motion and then we can go from there. So without further discussion, all those in favor of allocating six hundred thousand to the Fannie County, whatever, I can't.
I can't see it either.
Childcare learning, early learning.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Now, we have one more item to cover here, either yea or nay, or do something or do nothing. And that's Dr. Ruta's request for workforce development, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I move we fund Dr. Ruta's two hundred and twenty-five thousand out of ARPA.
And I would second that.
And is any discussion? Want to discuss that, Ryan? All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. What else under ARPA today? Is this, wait till we fill the chair?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your participation, everybody, in the ARPA funding. Now, let's see here on my agenda, we've got.
Thanks, Jeff.
We got a thing with Lana, something about RHID establishment.
Hi, good morning. All right, we've talked about rural housing incentive districts a lot over the last few years. And Commissioner Pishney has specifically brought up some concerns about the fact that it wasn't available for use in the unincorporated areas of the county. And we did answer to that, that the housing study unfortunately had not supported the need for additional housing in the unincorporated areas of the county. So one of the stated goals when we contracted for our most recent community housing assessment tool, which we have been contracting through the FCEDC office since 2008, we specifically told RDG Planning that we needed them to come and do a full reboot of the study, visit the community again, and make sure that they fully understood that really we're very limited in additional property that's available within the incorporated areas, both of the city of Garden City and the city of Holcomb. And that that need has not slowed any. We have more housing demand today than we had when they did the study two years ago. But we have to have someplace to build those houses. And so I think actually all of you got to participate in at least one of the stakeholder discussions. And then there were two or three of you at the unveiling of the study, if you will. I know Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Pishney were there. So you got to hear the results of that. We were able to show that the demand is still great and the available property, again, within the incorporated areas of the two cities, is not sufficient to meet the demand for housing that we have. So we would like to encourage the county to now move forward with getting approved to utilize the rural housing incentive district tool. So that requires that we identify parcels, potential parcels. Again, these are not guaranteed, these will be developed into housing. But part of the upfront plan that you submit says, we've identified these parcels as potential areas for housing development. And we are in support of utilizing this tool for housing development within Fannie County. And we will also talk to your other taxing entities. So if you looked at that map that we sent out, we split the parcels. So anything that's in USD four-five-seven is on one map. The stuff that's in three-six-three is on a separate map. And that's just for ease of discussion. When we're talking with those, about those parcels, is making sure that we're talking to the right school district, depending on who's actually going to be impacted by that RHID. So where we're at now is we would like you to, hopefully you've had a chance to review those parcels. Again, you're not stuck with these. Your initial plan just has to show that you have available parcels. We can add additional parcels as time goes by. So if a developer came to us and said, hey, I found this other parcel, it's not listed as approved already, that's fine, we can start back at square one with that particular property and get it included into the RHID plan. But upfront, we would, again, we'd like for you to have those identified parcels that we can submit as part of the plan to the Kansas Department of Commerce to get that approval underway, so that we, again, we can utilize that RHID tool throughout the county regardless of whether it's in the city limits of one of the communities or in the unincorporated area.
So what is being requested today would be a motion to approve this request.
To accept the housing report, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, that's correct.
Do you have that wording down there, Dory? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
And you are including the parcels in that? To accept the housing study and approve the parcels as identified in the attached maps for the?
I hadn't got that far yet, but.
I don't want to speed you up too much.
Dory's still writing.
It's good, it's actually written in the memo.
Number one. There we go, okay.
Thank you, Dory.
All stated here in just a second. But I guess my initial comment is it's a better light than never thing because it sure would have been nice to have this in place two, three years ago as one of our developers has struggled and had been annexed into the city and so forth to be able to qualify for RHID. So as Lana referenced initially, I've been a supporter of trying to get the county qualified for quite some time. So my motion would be, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the 2021 Fannie County chat report, which is the housing study, and approve the parcels as identified in the attached maps.
For RHID, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so we'll be coming back to you once we prepare your information to go to the Department of Commerce. We'll be coming back to you, we'll be working with the Neighborhood Development Services Office to ensure that we follow all the appropriate steps to get you ready to go. We'll obviously be communicating with Linda as we go through that to make sure that you guys are fully aware of everything that's happening. And if it comes to a point where you'd like to have somebody represented during those discussions, we're happy to do that. But at this time, FCEDC is happy to carry this ball and get you down the road towards being approved to do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Trishna? Good morning.
Good morning. So what I have for you is, for your consideration, is a resolution which establishes a refund policy for the overpayment of monies to the treasurer's office. This is specifically to deal with refunds under five dollars. Especially around this time of year, we receive a lot of payments. Some of those are overpaid by one, two cents. And so we're seeking permission to go ahead and receipt those into county general rather than cutting a check back to the taxpayer. Many counties around us, many similar-sized counties and larger counties, do have resolutions that allow them to do this as well. And this is kind of bringing us in line with those other counties. It's to clean up our bookkeeping a little bit. Does anybody have any questions?
Laurie. No, well, hang on a minute, I want to make a comment. Years ago, I was a member of the Highway Patrol and the state of Kansas told us to develop a petty cash fund to reimburse a trooper for a car wash or something because that two-dollar car wash cost over seven dollars then to have a check written. I'm assuming that check can't be written for seven dollars anymore, it's got to be more than that. So the concept is still the same. Could you create legally a petty cash fund, if you will, so that we don't have to go through all of the long drawn-out process of drafting a check and?
Yeah, that's what this would be doing, rather than drafting a check back to the taxpayer, which we currently do, it would be just receipting that into the county general, a line item in there.
All right, now I'd accept your motion, Laurie.
I move that we approve the resolution twenty-three dash twenty, twenty-one, is that the one?
Yes.
I'll second.
Have a second, discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you. And on to the fairgrounds usage policy.
We got another resolution first?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Yeah, Linda, come tell us what's important about that resolution.
What's important about that resolution? So they're reaching the point of starting to process those settlements with those companies. Fannie County has registered, excuse me, as part of that lawsuit. It's a very complicated process because some of these companies have gone bankrupt due to this litigation. But, so we've registered for the companies that are going to be paying out for a receipt of that. However, that is all going through the attorney general's office. And so this resolution allows us, it's sort of a memorandum of understanding between the counties, and it would be Fannie County here specifically, and the AG's office for the use of these funds as they come in. Based on my brief conversation with our opioid litigation attorney, he did recommend that we go ahead and sign up for this. I did talk to, I'm drawing a blank on his last name, Chris, Christopher, at the AG's office who's been in communication with me about this. And I believe he sent a letter that Dory included in your packet, kind of giving you a little bit more information.
Okay.
Now, these funds have to be directed to an ongoing program, don't they?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, something about youth.
Education and education and so forth and so on, yeah.
Yeah, this is kind of like the tobacco fund settlement, it's targeted, so. All right, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-two-one.
We'd also need you to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with the attorney general's office.
I said that.
Got it.
And I would second that with the caveat that for those online that maybe don't have the information we have, I think opioid's been mentioned once, but it's with regard to settlement of opioid litigation funds.
Okay, discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. We. See you, Lana. Now, are you going to handle the fairgrounds or are you handling something else?
Mr. Reese just asked me to go ahead and do that. Stephanie McGahey from the fairgrounds, she asked me, as part of my duties, to sort of revisit the usage policies. She and I worked together based on the previous year's policies to come up with what we're presenting to you today. And we're just asking that those be approved for 2022. I know that she has had a few people who have booked the fairgrounds or facilities at the fairgrounds for 2022. And so we would ask that these policies also retroactively be approved for those persons who have already signed up or reserved facilities at the fairgrounds.
Can you give me an example of what has changed on this?
Oh, golly.
And I couldn't really see much difference.
There isn't a lot of difference, Commissioner Drees. We cleaned up a lot of the language. Some of it was just a little messy from both of our perspectives, we felt. I think we tried to clean up, especially number six. There's a lot of information in number six. We tried to clean that up and make that a little more clear with regard to what constitutes damage and what would need to be paid for, what would be covered by, oh, the deposit fees and what would not be covered by deposit fees, what they could be charged for with regard to cleanup. Honestly, not a lot was changed. I also moved the electrician signature. I made that a separate document originally, it was part of the original document. Just some things that needed cleaned up in there that, just to make it a cleaner, more usable document for the fairgrounds.
The point, the part about staff checking the tables, staff does need to be available because at San Jose, we've waited a long time for staff to be available so we could pick up tables, so.
I will send that off to Ms. McGahey for her understanding that she does need to do that.
Tough place to price because you have the big commercial enterprise comes along and they get charged a full meal deal. And then you have somebody that's a 501(c)(3) trying to help the community and with no funds, and you have four things in between.
Right.
It's tough.
It is a huge job that Ms. McGahey is overseeing over there. And we do have a good list that she and I were also going over just for your information with regard to entities that are using those facilities for reduced fees or for free, and whether or not they should be on there. That's an ongoing discussion that she and I have been working on as well.
So what action is required from the commission here?
We are requesting the commission, nothing? Sorry, Dory's shaking her head.
Only at this time, we wanted you to review that. If you have any additional, if you have any changes, additions, subtractions, so forth. If you, then we would take that. But if you are, as a commission, willing to approve it as is, well, then that would save a topic for the twentieth. Firstly, I'm comfortable with it, I've read it and I've participated in that as well. So I would move that we approve the changes to the fairground facilities, usage policy.
Have a motion, second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good job, Linda. Hang on just a minute here, sign a couple things. There you go there. Okay. County administrators' report time, Robert?
Very good.
I drove out there a couple weeks ago and there was some guy fishing up there in that body of water in the very northwest corner.
Yep, you'll still have one or two people out there. But I think we had a, well, I do know we had a fire out there last week and some of the structures that they put up permanently have not made it long-term. If you follow what I'm getting at, they've been destroyed. So because of the various activities and no other recreation in that area, be closing it for the winter and we'll reassess it.
Okay.
Okay. For the bidding process for the sewer repair and improvement. On the twentieth, you'll have in front of you some various budget adjustments and year-end transfers. These, the budget adjustments are for category adjustments. In essence, they've expended more in a category. What we'll do is we'll clean that up at the end of the year. That will prevent that as being a unfavorable mark on your annual audit. And by the way, you'll have skeleton staff on the audit this week to do some preliminary work on it. Additionally, for year-end transfers, we're looking at transfers between funds or into reserve funds for various reasons. As I've spoke to the commission before, you, we've had in our employee benefits fund, in particular, health insurance, we've had a record year on expenditures.
Not the good kind of record.
That is correct. Last year, you had a good kind. This year, you have a little bit over a two-million-dollar swing in that fund. So we'll be making some adjustments there to make sure that we position the employee benefits fund in a favorable place for the 2023 budget. We're already, we planned for the 22 budget, that's not an issue at hand. We're trying to position the funds now for 23 and beyond. So you'll see those adjustments. Farmland Road, as you're aware, that project got underway after Thanksgiving. We have this Wednesday our first bi-weekly update on that project. So they're moving a little bit of dirt around and so on and so forth. So we'll keep you apprised of things as they continue to happen on that project. The last thing is, for your information, we've had, we had three employees, three employees that went through the Certified Public Managers program this year that successfully completed it this year and graduated on Friday. Those individuals are Kelly Munyon, Gabrielle Cruz. Congratulations, Gabrielle. And Yolanda from treasurer's office. So hats off to them, that's a very good program. I took it, participated in that program about 21 years ago. So it's a very good program. We do have other individuals that are interested in it for 22. I know one from the sheriff's office has expressed interest in it. And they do have a course specifically for law enforcement officers. So anyway, congratulations to those employees. It's a very intensive master's-level course, which will benefit them in their career here at Fannie County. So that is all I have, subject to any questions.
One other item I think, Dory, gave to you before the meeting started with regard to the special KAC meeting on January 5th.
You are.
December 16th, which is our next meeting.
You do need to act on that, then.
What do we need to act on, Lana, I didn't quite understand?
Well, I don't even remember now the reason for the meeting, but the KAC is having a special meeting for something, I don't remember now.
County special election has to do.
Oh, yeah.
Need a voting delegate for that.
It's to allow an affiliate group in, I can't remember what group it is, though. Registered deeds or, but it's to permit another affiliate group to KAC and they're doing it as a special meeting.
You have been our voting delegate.
I have in the past.
And so that's what.
And it's going to be, I mean, Zoom or electronic or something.
Yeah, it will be virtual voting.
So we could. Yeah, we could renominate you as a chief voter.
Well, they just need to know who that voter is going to be so they can.
I think by consensus, we have just answered that question. So.
Very good.
That's it?
Yep.
County council?
The big news that probably a lot of taxpayers.
The big news that probably a lot of taxpayers in the county are being made aware of is that I have begun the process of sending out letters for those persons who are delinquent on taxes for the year 2018 and proceeding in preparation for the county tax sale, which I believe hasn't happened for at least two to three years. I can't recall. So the County Treasurer's Office has been assisting me with that. I would say I've sent out about 50% of those letters to the delinquent taxpayers. So just if, if you want to keep your property out of that, out of those proceedings, go ahead and call the Treasurer's Office and make payment with regard to your delinquent taxes.
I'll make you a little side wager that if 40% of those come back, unable to deliver.
I would not disagree that that's a possibility. We, we have actually, we, we did a lot of work trying to make sure we had good addresses. That was, um, one of the preliminary tasks that I sent to the Treasurer's Office was to update some of those because I knew some of the addresses on the first, the first document I received probably weren't actual mailing addresses. So, so we're, we're hopeful. We'll see.
Okay. Larry, are you late for an 11 o'clock meeting?
No.
Yeah, I think you had an 11 o'clock and, and is he here?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to let you report first because you have a...
What? Interview? Oh, okay.
Yeah, see, you're getting forgetful in your old age, I'll tell you.
Well, I kind of forgot about that one, but...
Okay. Do you have a report? Then we'll let you go.
Uh, the only thing I did was attend the Republican meeting where we nominated our fellow commissioner to the 122nd.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Yep. That's it? Okay, you're free to sit there or free to go, whatever. Let's go down to lawn.
Well, just two, three things. One is, in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm visiting with KDHE with regard to our troublesome rules and regs on childcare facilities. And I think I finally found the right people to visit with, and I have a Zoom meeting with a couple of them in a week or so. But I started by getting ahold of Ashley Goss, our former health director, who was, served as interim director at the state level when the Dr. Norman resigned. But evidently, that didn't last very long because they've, they've made the appointment to Dr. Norman's replacement, so. But Ashley got me in contact with the right people, I believe, to talk about some of the issues that we have with rules and regs. I am going to go to Scott City Wednesday for the state housing study that is being revealed throughout the state. And they've got a meeting in Scott City at noon and one in Dodge City in the evening. And then I did participate in the Workforce Board virtual meeting Friday. Nothing necessarily to report. I'm urging them to get back to in-person visits because it's hard for me to, to communicate with people by Zoom, so. And that's about it, I guess.
All right. Thanks, lawn. Go ahead.
Attended the Economic Development Monthly Meeting and then the reception for Nicole, who has, that was her last day at the work. She's full-time at the family business now instead of Economic Development, so I do not know if they've replaced her position yet or if they intend to, but anyway.
I didn't know if she left.
Yeah. Wednesday was her last, well, the last monthly meeting was her last day. Her and her husband bought the Kenny Glass business. So there, she's devoting her time to that now. And then we had a Great Plains meeting, usual stuff. They have, because of the Christmas season, we will not have another Great Plains until January, so.
Okay.
So much for that.
All right, I'll hurry through a kind of a list of meetings. Sat on an interview as you did with, for a Public Works Director and, and then attended the Fannie County Committee on Aging meeting. And I appreciate Patty being presented here today so that the decision was announced, as was Sandy Holly, so we've already taken care of that. The Republican Convention, I attended just as an observer, and that was interesting. What was interesting, I think that I had the number at the time, like 56 eligible delegates to vote, and Bill had 32 votes, and I think Lawn was second with 14. But it was, it was interesting to see, but the one poor fellow from, from Lakin got three votes. I felt sorry for him, but anyway, it was interesting. I attended the Planning Commission, and there we had quite a discussion about where he ought to apply for, for board membership. And I still am going to respectfully disagree with everybody and say that ought to be over here in our house. So I won't win that battle, but I can still state my position because I ask what next? When do we need a fair board appointment? Do we need to run that by the city clerk and get her approval? So probably not, but, but they're setting on that information. We have no idea who's applied, and so that's my concern. Then this, this has been addressed here today by Vicki Gurman and Ronaldo Mesa and a couple of other realtors. We've all had contact with realtors over a form that the Census Office is using or was using, and that, that's been addressed and taken care of. I reported on the Nazarene Church contacting me about COVID taking some of their kids out of attendance. I spent most of a day on fire, on, on Assessment Center for New Fire Chief, and I don't know who they've picked yet because Matt was out of town until Friday. And then I've had a, a couple of conversations with former board member Bill Clifford, and he wanted me to read that letter that I read today, and so that takes care of his, his desire. I have one question before we close, and senior center lights. Do we know anything about, when I went to the senior center, they pointed out that their parking lot lights were not working. I sent that over to Robert. He gave it to, I didn't realize Rex was on, on COVID leave, but gave that to somebody. And, and we've not had, do you know Kathleen? Are they working?
I'll have Rex follow on, up on that. He just came back last week.
Yeah, because that, you know, those old folks out there meandering around in the dark, that could be dangerous and so...
My understanding is that the lights in the parking lot area work is the lights off of the, off the building that shine on the...
Rex and crew put up LED replacement lights here a couple, maybe a couple of years ago or a year and a half ago.
And I don't recall where, whether that was ins, for some reason, I was thinking that was inside.
Yeah, there was some on the outside.
Okay. Okay, so we'll follow up on that.
Okay, all right. And with that, I don't have anything else. Is there anything else to come before this group for the good of the order? Yeah, we have lunch at the, at the Historical Society at 12:00. Larry, you have an appointment for an interview for a, a meeting at 11 o'clock, so we will adjourn until, how about December 20?